Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Madison Board of Education School Board meeting for October 11th to order. Full all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. King. Board of Fuell, review the agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve.
No move.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Agenda passes. Dr. Nichols, presentations, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have a couple of work that I asked Mr. Ken Bagwell to come and give us an update, both on where we are finishing up with Journey and also with the work we're doing on our new school property.
Good evening. Happy to be here this evening and give an update on the 2019 CIP projects as well as the new 2022 CIP project. So, as you know, the 2019 CIP includes the Midtown Elementary School, which has been open, and the Journey Middle School, which we just opened in August. We're trying to close that one out now. You actually have Change Order Number Two on your agenda for approval tonight, I believe. If you would, let's just progress through. As far as the financials, I have that information up first for the 2019 budget drawdown. So, looks like we're going to end up close to $10 million under the established budgets for that program. So, that is excellent news. After the approval of Change Order Number Two tonight, there shouldn't be an additional cost on that project. But as we are closing it out, there may be some just minute costs that comes along the way. But it shouldn't be anything drastic that would throw off those numbers. So, overall, we came in again close to $10 million under on that program. So, that is excellent news to provide you tonight. Here's just a drawdown for Midtown. I think the only thing that's changed on that one since our last meeting was the purchase of some additional card readers out there. Next slide, please. Journey Middle School drawdown, there's been a few items added to that. Purchase orders issued since my last presentation, such as the installation of your permanent hardware cores and some additional keys and additional furniture order and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Let's progress on to the next slide. So, an overview on Midtown. We ended up $249.09 a square foot on that project, which is excellent. That project is completely closed out. We had our year-end inspection last year. And I'm just really mentioning this project because it's part of that program. So, next slide, please. Journey Middle School. Contract cost, as far as the construction contract with the building contractor, we're currently at $215 a square foot on that project. That does not include the cost for our mass grading contractor. Once I add that cost to it, I believe it bumps it up to somewhere around $225 a square foot. This number does include Change Order Number Two tonight that you have on your agenda as well. That does include that value. So, we did, we built Journey cheaper per square foot than we built Midtown. So, that was, you know, this program was excellent. It hit right before COVID. So, we just really hit everything perfect on these two projects. Substantial completion was granted at the end of July. We did Occupy, as you know, August the 3rd. And as I said earlier, project closeout is in progress. I'm hoping we can get this thing closed out in the next four to six weeks. Next slide, please. Now, I want to introduce the 2022 CIP, which is the new, we're calling it now the new Russell Branch Elementary School. And it's just being named for the small blue line stream that runs through there.
But that's not the name of it.
That is not the official name.
We're going through the process of naming it.
Exactly. We have to have something to put down on paper. So, right now, we just said, let's name it for the creek that runs through there. So, it's Russell Branch Elementary is what we're calling it right now. As far as our financial commitments right now, the only financial commitments that have been made is for MVP Architects, Noah Van Persim. And if you proceed to the next slide, I'll give you an update on that. Again, we've got a budget of $54 million. And so, we just barely have allocated any of that for some professional services. So, it's really early stage of this project. That is a color rendering that Noah Van Persim developed. And it's just a preliminary rendering. An update on this with a project schedule. We do have actually a bid opening October 24th. And it's for the procurement of structural fill material. And once we get a low bid established for that, we will be bidding the mass grading package shortly thereafter. And our mass grading contractor will use that dirt that's established as their source for bringing our grades up to where they need to be to start the building package. So, we anticipate that we will bid the mass grading package in December of this year. And we anticipate that we'll bid the building package in June of '24. And that school is slated to open in August of '26. And I believe that is all the slides. Any questions on these or any questions on Change Order Number Two for Journey that's on the agenda tonight?
And mainly that change order had to do, we had to move some electrical equipment.
Yes, that change order.
For the utilities department.
Yes, it's mainly, the value of that is mainly associated with contributions and aid to construction from our various utility service providers.
Okay. I know you all keep up with this because of the projects you're managing around the state. But I heard a bid opening for a new high school was over $400 a square foot. So, to look at 228, 230, that's, that's pretty substantial change in the last three years.
It was a bargain. I'm concerned about this upcoming project. I hope we don't see that $400 number up in this area. We are managing a program for Montgomery City Schools right now. And they're seeing numbers, 425 a square foot down in that part of the state. Hopefully, we won't see that here. But we will be beating the bushes to generate contractor interest. And we will be watching the design closely, try to put in, you know, products that reflect what you want to see in your schools, but also consider cost through the design process. So, are there any additional questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Dr. Nichols?
Have a presentation by Mr. Russell Johnson and Ms. Mason Overcash. They have been working on a new seal and logo design. So, I present the new seal to you. And gentlemen, where's yours?
Thank you, Dr. Nichols and members of the board. We're really excited about the opportunity to work on this. And really, I'm going to turn it over to Mason to talk about the artistic and logistics of designing this.
I think some of you are aware that there have been conversations about updating logos and seals for a while now. One of the discussions we had was that seals traditionally are timeless and they are very official. They're the stamp of legitimacy on universities and other educational institutions. And so, we wanted our seal to reflect that. And so, we had what we've always kind of considered a logo. But we really wanted to make that hardship into a seal, the kind of thing that would show up on all of the diplomas we give out, the kind of thing that would be on boardroom walls and on all our official documents. And so, we went back to the original logo seal we had here, and we wanted to honor that. There was a lot to it, the apple, the globe, the book. And so, as we moved into the seal, we had the task of trying to make a timeless official stamp that honored that. And so, we moved, I found it interesting, and I checked with the city. Maybe you'll find this interesting as well. The tree you see is Madison City's tree. And we got with the city and we talked to them about us honoring that. And it also pays homage to the apple that we originally had on the logo. But we've made it our own, so it's a little different. We have a book, we have the globe, and all of that fits into a nice, clean, hopefully timeless design that we can live with forever. While logos change every, you know, 10 to 12 years, seals are forever. And so, that was the goal, and that's what we're shooting for here.
And kind of just, Mason and Russell, talk about how you looked at university seals and that compared to how logos are created on different things.
So, we went back and we did some research, and we looked at a lot of top universities. And we charted, well, we documented all of their seals as a starting point. And then, we got their logos, and then, we looked at how the logos changed over time. And so, some changed theirs quite frequently, others not so much. But we looked at the progression of those logos. And so, there's a little side project where we're working with a logo for central office. But our main focus was here on the seal. And we saw the progression of those logos. We saw what is current. And then, we looked at other high schools and school districts in the nation to see what really worked well and what didn't with seals. And I think if you did a Google search, you'd see that we're on the right side of things. It was pretty clear what we needed to do. And then, for all of us who worked on the project, it was just a puzzle to make it happen. Do you have any questions, comments?
Well, I know that you not only worked together on this, but you also asked students for feedback on it as well.
So, yeah, as I work on it, once I get my kids going in class, sometimes I'll just work on a project with them. And sometimes that's a painting, and in this case, it was the seal. And so, I have a TV up on my wall, and it's hooked to my computer. And so, as I was designing the seal, it was up on the wall for everyone to see. And students would come by and say, hey, what's going on? What is that? And I'd get their input, well, they'd offer their input at times. But yeah, it was a very transparent process. And the way that the art and the arts in general work at James Clemens, there's a lot of foot traffic through there. And so, it did become a collaborative project with a lot of input along the way. And certainly within the art department and Russell and I.
All right. Excellent question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nichols, is that closed presentations this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Now is the time in the board when we will have a board meeting, when we will have public comments. If you've signed up previously with Ms. King, then she will call your name. And she is indicating to me that we have no public comments tonight. So, I will close the public comment period, and we will move into action items. And we will start with business actions. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval Consent Agenda contains several items. A, minutes 23-21 of September the 7th. B, the rubric of field trip request. C, a clinical internship agreement by between the City of Madison Board of Education, Eastview Family Dentistry for internship for our medical students at James Clemens. D, changes to the 23-24 Madison City Schools salary schedule reflects the state requirement of $15 per hour in percentage change. E, change orders for several projects. F, an agreement by between Madison City Board and Dr. Velma Robertson. This is a continuing service agreement for audiology services. G, a subscription agreement by between the Board of Education and Central Reach to provide software platform that helps with digitally track and assess critical skills languages. I've lost. H, there's H. An agreement by between the City Board and Montgomery Interpreting Services is continuing agreement that we had previously. I, an agreement by between the City Board and the Enrichment Center to provide two full-time mental health counselors for the 23-24 school year. J, an agreement by between the board and No Red Ink to provide online site that offers writing and grammar practice for students. K, a bid from Apple Surplus that will take old computers, Apple computers and other implements and clean them up and offer them resale back to staff members in the community. And L, facility agreements for the Madison City School.
Board, Dr. Nichols recommends the consent agenda items before you. They are A through L. Can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd ask Ms. Williams to come forward and present the August 2023 financial and bank reconciliation statements for Madison City School.
Good evening, board and Dr. Nichols. Presenting the August 2023 financial statements, we should be at 91%. Our revenues are currently at 89.03% and our expenditures are at 76%.
Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for approval the August 2023 financial and bank reconciliation statements as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends the August 2023 financial statements for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Overcash. Any discussion, board? I'll state for the record that we had a finance committee meeting preceding the board meeting, and all of the board was there. And we were able to address any questions in that setting. And we thank Ms. Williams for walking us through it as she does every month. If there's nothing else, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of board, I'll ask Mrs. Williams to present to you the August 2023 budget amendment for Madison City School.
For August 2023, our budget amendment was a total of $364,075. And that was because of an increase in vending machines and then capital projects for scoreboards.
Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for approval the August 2023 budget amendment as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends the August 2023 budget amendment for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Overcash. Any discussion, board? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for approval the new seal that was presented for Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the new Madison City Schools seal. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. Discussion?
Well, I think we, when I came three and a half years ago, that one of the first things mentioned by the board was to update the seal. So, maybe we're a little slow, I don't know. But I think.
Deliver it.
We're deliberate. It's not as easy as it sounds. And I certainly appreciate Russell and Mason and the work that they have put into it. And they have researched and, and I really believe have come up with what, as Mason told me the very first meeting, we don't really have a seal, Dr. Nichols. We have a logo. And so, what you're asking me to do is create a seal because we really need that. And they spent time and did historical work and looked at other schools and universities. And I certainly appreciate the effort that they have put into it.
Anything else?
I think it looks great.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? The new seal passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, it is time for the board to select three delegates to attend the delegate assembly for the AASB as well as an alternate. So, I'm not sure I have to. I don't know if I take nominations on this. It's not, I think it's yours. So, we need three folks to serve as a delegate.
I guess I can nominate, and we can do it by acclamation? Okay, or you just volunteer. Go ahead.
Well, I nominate Ms. Lesman to serve on it.
Thank you. I nominate Mr. Newberry.
I'll nominate Mr. Cummings.
What's going on here?
Well, that narrows the alternative.
Mr. Overcash?
Mr. Overcash says as an alternate.
Y'all don't get sick. I think that's good enough right there. Ms. King has recorded your volunteer and will make note and send to AASB.
All right, that takes us to item six in Business Actions. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of board, I don't recommend. I put into notice a first reading of two policies. One is 4.14 Cameras and Self-contained Classrooms and 6.1 Off-Campus Events. Mr. Newberry and Ms. Lesman are on the policy committee and may want to comment. But we will distribute this and then bring it back at the next board meeting for vote.
Yeah, so the 4.14 Cameras and Self-contained Classrooms. We already had a policy for this. The state then passed a law about cameras and self-contained classrooms. So, this is mainly an amendment of our policy to come into compliance with the state, with the law that was recently passed by the state in the last session. And then, the 6.1 Off-Campus Events was, we, as the board, after this policy goes into effect, will approve all field trips, all field trips, not just out-of-state field trips. And I believe that is for, can't remember the fun name, but there's an exact reason for that. But I believe it has to do with insurance, I think. So those are the two amendments, the two policy changes.
And as Dr. Nichols said, there'll be no vote tonight. It'll be out on our website. It'll be socialized and we will take any feedback. And we will have a vote on that at our next meeting. Anything further?
Quick question, it may be important to state that the cameras in the self-contained class, we had a policy before the state ever had a policy on that. So we was ahead of the state with that regards, correct?
Yes, sir.
We basically changed our wording to match. Nothing else changed, really.
Got it. Thank you.
But the state law was very close to our policy as well. I think Mr. Sanderson mentioned that in the policy meeting.
Anything else? All right. Dr. Nichols, I believe that closes business actions and moves us into personnel?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Under personnel actions, I would recommend approval of the list of substitutes for Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends the list of substitutes that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group?
Yes.
With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion?
Dr. Ja continues to add to our sub-list. We continue to tweak Red Rover that we've been using. She will bring us back next meeting to report maybe on the first nine weeks of how our substitute process is working. And if anybody's listening and not on the sub-list and would like to, we contact the HR department, we'd be glad to have you.
If there's nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? List of substitutes passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for approval the supplemental contracts for work to be performed for Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can these also be taken as a group? With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. Discussion?
These are standard for this time of the year, instructional support. Also, National Board Certified Teacher Mentors as well as supplements for athletic and...
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the remaining personnel actions that you have in front of you. Can these be taken as a group? Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there any in particular you'd like to call attention to this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, there's several. First of all, I've had retirement. Missy Hall has been with Access and is retiring 14 years. Served as program support manager, technical manager, and looking forward to spending time with three grandchildren. Not all of them are here yet, one's on the way and her family. And we wish her the very best. We also have some transfers into new positions. So I'll ask these folks to please stand. We have Janet Dennis. Janet is moving from the network specialist to the coordinator of technology. She, prior to coming to us, was a software consultant for InnerGraph, stayed home for a while and then came to us in 2010 as worked in about every aspect and area of our district. And so now she will take charge of Mr. Payon. And I'm not sure that's possible. I don't know. Good luck with that. But she's been running it the whole time, might as well put her behind it. But we certainly appreciate Janet and we look forward to her. And this is helping us to continue to fill out our technology department. We also are transferring our instructional partner at Bob Jones. Jane Herndon is going to move to our federal program specialist position that was vacated by Caitlin Herman when she moved to the coordinator position. And so, you know, we just keep moving people. Now Jane will not move effectively until after the break at the middle of the year. That will give us time to work and refill that position and have continuity on that. We don't want to just take her right out of the midst of all that. And so Jane has been, as the board knows, taught for us. James Clemens worked at the central office, has been working at Bob Jones as instructional partner since 219. She's working so hard, she's on a crutch tonight. I don't know. But we certainly look forward to Jane coming and working alongside Dr. Dooley and the federal program staff. We also transferring at the break Courtney Horton. Courtney will be moving from Bob Jones. I will say, we did talk to Ms. Lambert about all this. And once she was resuscitated and revived, we were good. That she will be moving into our testing and accountability position. Of course, the board is aware that Mr. Lipinski will be retiring at the end of the year. And so Courtney's going to move into that role. And it's not a role that somebody walks out of one day and somebody new walks in the next. There's a lot of requirements across the state. So she will be in the rest of this semester, kind of getting some update on that. But the spring is when that really kicks into high gear. And so she'll be there to work alongside Mr. Lipinski. She also will help us to create data and to watch, create that for our curriculum department. Courtney, again, is no stranger to us. She came and taught at Discovery Middle School and then Liberty as the instructional partner. And then since 216, has been assistant principal at Bob Jones High School. So we look forward to Courtney joining the district team and doing that work. Courtney, congratulations and Jane and Janet, all of you, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. So that will close out personnel actions and move us into superintendent comments.
Well, it's been a while since we met. And I think the last time we met, we actually went in executive session and none of us had any comments. And I realize that I had some comments all the way back to about September. I'm not sure. But first of all, SRO Sam Scott is with us. And I certainly appreciate our SROs and Sam. And, you know, we've made a concerted effort to expand our safety issues. I know that we have a new check-in system that we are piloting at the elementary schools. We now have our crisis alert. I'm trying not to press the wrong button and cause people to run in this building. But we have our crisis alert badges for all of our employees that helps us have response to that. And Dr. West is working on getting our updated cameras and our door access systems. And you know, those funds were part of the 12 meal to add security. And so we not only have Sam and his colleagues in the SRO, but we have other security personnel at our elementary schools. So I certainly appreciate Dr. West, Sam, thank you and all of your folks. It's National Principals Month, I think, or week, or day. I don't know, it's all over Facebook. And I certainly want to say thank you to all of our principals. And we are blessed to have great administrative leaders at all of our schools as well as assistant principals. I don't know, they get a month maybe somewhere, I don't know. We'll give them a shout out anyway, the work that they do. Met with our key communicators, as the board is aware, last year, I created a key communicator group of about 30 community leaders from all over Madison County. And so we met at Journey Middle School and gave them a tour of that facility and talked about our strategic plan and also our capital plan and those things that we were working forward. And also, the podcast will come out this week. This one's on art and music, since we now have art and music staff in our elementary schools. We're not rotating semesters, we wanted to bring life to that. We are in the Bob Jones wing. That is, our kids are over there now and that's an exciting thing. And also, I'm proud to say, we've been waiting. But Mr. Terrell, October 30th, will be in the pre-K center one way or the other. Is that right? Okay. All right. I'm holding you to that. It's been a long, we've had some holdups. As Shane could tell you, there's, you know, we got a new scoreboard at the stadium that we can't get going yet because of the back order of electrical equipment. And so we've had some back orders of those types of things that have just held us up a little bit. So, but we're looking forward to getting there. We also spent time right before the break doing data meetings. Dr. Donaldson and our curriculum team, data meetings with all of our schools, looking at their data from last year. We looked at attendance data, we looked at academic data and set goals for them. And we're going to have a work session with you so that you can take a look at that. We also announced, I think since our last meeting, that we had 32 national merit semifinalists. Certainly proud of that, that that's the most of any district in the state. And we've probably been the most of districts in the state for the last five years, pretty close. And, but that's a, that's a, that's a pre-K12 success. It's not just a high school. It's challenging academics. I was at the SSA Superintendent Conference. Several school districts were wanting to talk about how we do accelerated math and how we do other accelerated programs. And so by having those opportunities for kids, then we also give them that opportunity to reach their fullest potential. One of the things I'm excited about this year is at each of our high schools, we have an interventionist position. We kind of didn't really have that. This is the person who really will coordinate with the counselors, with the assistant principals, with principals, and really look at where our kids are that may be falling through the crack, making sure that the communication amongst everybody is working well for RTI or different things and doing that. That should work well with the software that we purchased as well. Bloom, where we now can track our discipline in a better way. Teachers will know when they need a discipline address, that they get feedback on that. But it's also on the mental health side. I see Stephanie Allen back there. And I know that one of the items that we had was an agreement to expand two more people from the enrichment center on a grant that Lee and Stephanie and others worked on. And there's Lee, she was ducked down, I couldn't see her. That will help with suicide prevention and other types of issues. And so I certainly want to say thank you to them for the work that they've done to reach out and look at a state grant. I think Lee said there were 17 school districts in the state that got a grant. 14, I'm three too high. 14 school districts that got this grant that was offered by the state and we were one of them. And so that happens because our team as a whole looks for these areas where we can support our students. And I certainly, certainly appreciate the work that they've done. And I think that's, I think that's enough for me. So I could go on and on because of the great things our staff's doing. And so thank you to all and look forward to our folks who are moving into new positions. We'll get you on the ground running quickly, trust me.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We will move into board comments. We'll start with Mr. Overcash.
Well, I'm glad to be back, even though fall break doesn't really mean too much to you if you don't have kids at school. Hopefully, everybody had a good fall break and came back and a smooth restart to school. And I missed, we hadn't been together in about a month, so I had to be back.
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Newberry?
I wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Dennis, Ms. Herndon and Ms. Horton. It's a really great thing about this district that we nurture talent from within and allow people to move up and develop their own careers within the system. I also wanted to thank Mr. Johnson and the other Mr. Overcash. I think the seal looks great. And it's, you know, he's right, we didn't really have a seal. And I don't know if he's an artist, of course, and I don't know if he has the same like fear of a blank page, but like you start with nothing, you got to create something. And I thought what it turned out to be was really, really great. Thank you to the finance team. That was, as always, it's a good presentation. Y'all presented a bunch of great data. Thank you for pulling all that together. Yeah, I hope everybody had a great fall break. That does mean the first nine weeks is over, which is hard to say. But here we are. So I think that is, you know, that's everything I've got. So glad to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Newberry. Ms. Lesman?
I echo everything these guys said, you know, congratulations on your transfers. And thank you, everyone, for your hard work with the seal, the finance. I wanted to say a few words. I know Mr. Overcash said like we hadn't seen each other, but right before, we did see each other quite a bit in Washington, which Mr. Holtcamp will talk more about. And then we had a fall AASB conference that we all got to go to. And the theme was leadership for community engagement. And basically saying, you know, as educators, we want to make a, and the school system, we want to make a welcoming environment to our parents and the community. And then in turn, for the community and parents to be our ambassadors and supporters. And we work together, which I feel that we do a really great job. And just based on what Dr. Nichols was talking about, many of the programs we have in place, the key communicators group, he helped put that together with, based on input from the community. And we're basically letting them know what all the great things we are doing in the schools. Because sometimes you can hear statistics for Alabama, but that's not necessarily what's going on in our schools. And so there in turn, they can help spread the word that, no, this is what's going on in Madison City. And they showed some examples. Mobile County Schools presented on a, there were some different breakout sessions that you could go to. Mobile County had done something, they called it Leadership Learning, Learning Leadership University. And theirs was a little bit different, but basically the gist was the same, where you're getting out and you choose people from the community, your stakeholders, and tell them about the school. So I thought that was really great that we're continuing to do that. They talked about Project Tomorrow and Speak Up. If you Google that, you can look, they were basically research projects through surveys and focus groups. And it discussed the importance of communication. And there's a greater dependence, as everyone probably knows, on digital tools for communication and education these days. And parents have new demands and expectations for communications. And they want it communicated, but they want it their way, which means email or social media or Instagram. And everybody has different, different types of communication they respond to. Oh, well, I didn't see that. Well, I checked Facebook all day. Or, you know, some people, I didn't see an email. And I think also that we are doing a good job with that too for the Madison City Schools, talking about, you know, we've got a podcast. We've got email. Mr. Peck does an excellent job. If you check our Facebook page and our website, it is constantly updated. And there's a newsletter you can go up to and see what is the latest news going on. So thank you, Mr. Peck, for doing that. And it's well-written and he's got to be at all these events. So I just wanted to say that was part of our conference. And then there was a post-conference talking about the drugs going on in the schools. And I was just like, it was very eye-opening on vaping. It can look like a USB port for your computer. It can look like a phone, it can look like a hoodie. And this is just things that parents should be aware of. So people are getting very creative out there. So other than that, welcome back. I know that seemed really long, so, but happy to be back. And it was a great conference and missed you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Cummings?
You know, I will say, I just want to say, you know, thank you, Ms. Allen, Ms. Shaw and the team that worked on that PACE program. You know, with COVID, you know, it brought our awareness to the mental health. And I'm so excited that we are continuing to work.
And I'm so excited that we are continuing, continue to work on avenues and opportunities to expose our students and our help provide our students with some services. Um, I also want to say congratulations, Ms. Dennis, Ms. Herndon, and Ms. Horton. I tell you what, when you have opportunity like this and you're able to promote from within, and then so next month, I'm sure somebody will be filling in your seats and will be congratulating them. And I'm sure that some of those replacements will be internal people as well, because we know Madison City Schools is full of superstars. And I love the fact that we can promote from within and then find up-and-coming superstars and put them in position to provide that opportunity. I think to me, you know, that mindset, that it helps morale. And, you know, a lot of times, the person getting in position and staying in that position, then when, when that person leave out, somebody from the outside come in, you never have a chance for it. But every time we can permit, promote from within, you know, and encouraging everybody else in our district that opportunity is here, and I just excited about that. Um, I know you mentioned the scoreboard wasn't working, but the dancing lights are working out there and it's outstanding to see that when you go to the football games. I mean, this is just an outstanding system, and I love the everything that we're doing behind the scenes. It just, thank you and keep up the outstanding work.
Well said, Mr. Cummings. Appreciate that.
Excuse me, too, Mr. President. Next time can I speak first, because they taking all, everything I want to say. It's throwing me off.
All right. Note to self? Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Lesman, uh, mentioned it, uh, the board and Dr. Nichols traveled to Washington DC a couple of weeks ago, uh, as part of a COSPA conference and advocacy session. Uh, COSPA is a new, uh, national consortium of, uh, state school board associations. Uh, it's, it's, uh, there's now, Alabama was one of the charter members, uh, more aligned with our values, and, uh, there's now 25 states that are a member of that. Um, we were there to advocate for, uh, one, it was on the eve of the government shutdown. And so we're, uh, we're advocating for, uh, for continuing federal funding that, that really helps and promotes our district. That includes, you know, things that you're, you're very well aware of, uh, like CNP and then other things that, that you might not be as well aware of, uh, programs that, that help, uh, English language learning. Uh, as, as we've said several times before, you know, this is a very diverse district and we speak, uh, we have over 50 languages spoken in this district. And so programs like that, uh, really assist Madison City Schools, even though federal funding isn't a, a large percentage of our funding like it is for, for some districts, uh, it, it still is certainly very valuable funding. And the, uh, uh, your, your US senators and your US representatives were, uh, were very, uh, open to us. Uh, we, we met with, uh, the, with Senator Brett and we met with Senator Toverville's office, and we met with either the, uh, all of the US reps and/or their staffs. And they were all, uh, uh, litted us a, a, an ear and, and many, uh, completely agreed with, with, uh, with our positions. And, and many that you know, uh, our local reps were, uh, were very excited to see us and, and are as supportive of us as they've always been. So, uh, so we were able to, we were able to, uh, advocate for that. Um, let's see. I did want to say congratulations. Uh, it's, it's been said, said many times and, and very well, but, uh, but congratulations. Always excited to see, uh, see the, the promotions inside the district, as, as Mr. Cummings said so well. And, uh, and thank you, SRO Scott. Always a pleasure to see you. We appreciate all you do for, uh, for this system and for our citizens and certainly for our students every day. We really appreciate you. And with that, if there's nothing further, our next school board meeting is November 2nd at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. And I will entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We adjourn.